And, uh...
Seven PM.
And I call this meeting of the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of the Board of Trustees meeting to order. I would ask the Village Clerk if she will please take the role.
Trustee Cuthbert is, uh...oh, that's right, he's getting a soda. He's here. President Klein?
Here.
Trustee O'Brien-Berglin?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Cuthbert?
Yes.
Trustee Stanifer?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Wacken?
Here.
Anne Zappa?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, we have some minutes from the January 4th Board meeting, and I would ask, first of all, a motion to approve the minutes as presented, and then we can talk about any edits. So, here a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Was that Darrell and Jim? Or Stan and...
No, I was wondering whose turn it was.
Oh. All right. We'll go with Jim, Darrell. Okay. All right. Any edits? All right, hearing none. I'll, uh, ask for a vote. All in favor of approving the meeting minutes of January 4th as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Comments from the floor is an opportunity for residents to make the Board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities not on today's agenda. Kurt?
My name is Kurt Leece, and I live at 613 Cedar Drive North, and half of the last eighteen years. And the topic I want to talk about tonight is the library. It's appropriate for the newspaper, uh, person to be here because I think the Star Observer has some guiltiness as well. I mean, we've been misled, I think the Village Board has been misled, by the previous mayor, Mr. Knudsen, by the city council, by our, um, representative on the library board, Mr. O'Connor, and now Mr. Howard. Um, I think it was two years ago, there was a binding referendum, a binding referendum, and every municipality in the library, um, conglomerate, whatever you want to call it, um, all the municipalities, every one of them voted against additional spending for the library. Every single one of them. Yet, here we are this year, we're spending $136,000 more than budgeted for the library. $136,000 over a $700,000 budget. Mr. Schoberg was here, the new president of the library board was here several months ago, and was begging you for more money. Said he was out of money, yet he just found $40,000 to spend on a consultant, and they say it's to create a vision for the library. Well, let me tell you what that vision is, because Mr. Schoberg is, he's fond of those 23-member tasks force, because he headed one up for the school district to try to give us a new high school. They want to give us, they want us to pass a referendum to buy that building, because they couldn't afford the building when they moved in, they cannot afford the building now. At the rate they're spending, they're going to be out of money in three years, less than three years now. We have no representation. That's frustrating for me as a village resident. It should be frustrating for you as a board member, Village Board member, because you didn't have a vote, and neither did I. And what they did was, they hoodwinked you, they wanted to leverage you, get you into the building, and now they're going to leverage you and say, "Well, you can't kick us out." What you need to tell them is, yes, we can. We're not going to take the village taxpayers to a referendum. Uh, and here's where they want to go. They want to, they want to get their budget up to $1.2 million from $700,000, after every municipality said, "No more spending for the library." I think that's, that's just sad. Uh, and I will continue to offer to serve on the library board so that the taxpayers of North Hudson have some representation on there, because with Mr. Howard on there, they still do not have any representation on that library board. So, I think, and, and the newspaper has written that, "Oh, we'll be able to move into the building with no new taxes." Well, that's just wrong. First of all, they used $2 million from the city coffers. They didn't have a, those city taxpayers had no choice either. The mayor and the city council just confiscated $2 million from those people and said, "That's not a tax increase." Well, heck, it's not a tax, it is a tax increase. I'm just letting, I'm just looking at Mr. Stolberg here, because he's writing those articles that says it's not a tax increase. It is a tax increase, and they're coming after the village taxpayers next. And I'm hoping that the Village Board will say no to these people. I'm hoping that, uh, the Village President will see fit to put somebody on that library board that will look out for the taxpayers, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
New business from the Board or Staff, begin with the President's comments. I just had a few things that I'd like to bring to your attention. First of all, anybody who's out watching our, uh, watching our little show this evening, I, I wonder why you're watching us and not tuned into Wisconsin Public Radio, so that you could listen to Governor Walker's State of the State. His address is going on even as we speak. It started about seven o'clock this evening. Uh, I am sure that WRFM 88.7 will be talking about it this evening after he's finished, as well as probably all day tomorrow. Uh, I have a very nice pink sheet here to remind everybody that the Hot Air Affair is this coming weekend, and, uh, looks like the title that they're using this year, the theme is "When Pig Skins Fly." Jeez, I wonder what that could possibly be about? I don't see any Packer shirts on here, but, hey. Um, on a more serious note, and I, this is a serious note, I'd like to just read a very brief paragraph or two here from Capital Buzz. Capital Buzz is a, uh, an email that we get from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and the, uh, this is dated January 18th. Governor Walker plans to impose strict limits on property tax increases while giving local governments new tools to manage costs. On Sunday's Upfront with Mike Gusha, a statewide TV news magazine, Governor Walker was asked if he would be willing to cap property taxes at about 2%. Walker said he hopes to, quote-unquote, "get closer to zero," while still allowing provisions for growth and development. This could definitely impact what we'll be able to do in the village. Quite frankly, I don't know where we can cut and scrimp any more than we're already doing, but that becomes our challenge. I would ask all Board members to carefully read their copy of the, um, it's, the magazine that we get called The Municipality, again, a publication of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and especially what's right inside the front cover, reconsider collective bargaining. This, uh, could have an impact, even on the village. That's all I have for this part of the program. I would then ask Gloria if she has any comments.
I do. Um, this is in regards to the new HSA law that the governor had just passed to allow our, uh, HSA contributions, employer and employee, um, contributions to be pre-taxed. It follows with about 48 other states and the federal, um, that, that does not charge tax on that, so that was...
That's very good news.
Yes, it is. Um, it made a, I, I could see the changes in the, the paychecks even, this time. We, we put it in place right away, so, and it is retroactive back to January 1st, so that was good news. And that's really all I had.
Does that save the, uh, Village money?
Uh, it does not.
I just like the way that works, because it's, the employee saves the most, because they just don't, it's normally around 6.5% of those dollars, so...
Right.
Yeah, it's the tax from...
It's a hundred bucks or so a year.
About $20, $28 a paycheck.
For family, or...yeah.
Anything else, Gloria?
No, that's it.
Okay. Becky?
Uh, just one, uh, brief mention about the election coming up on February 15th. Anticipated to be a fairly small election, as there's just one race. It's a, a primary, and that would be for the state Supreme Court Justice. So, that is the only item on the ballot, but we will be here from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM that day, and we hope that residents still come out and exercise their right to vote that day.
And how would I find out something about the candidates for the position of state Supreme Court Justice?
Move to the other side of the stage.
Yeah. Not, not...
If the Star Observer will do a little write-up.
I'd, I'd read the Milwaukee Journal if I were you.
Yeah. It's difficult on the side of the state to get a lot of information.
I wasn't being facetious, I was actually being very serious, so that anyone out there who did want to show up to vote in a primary would at least know where to go to find out information about these candidates, and so I looked to my friend Doug Stolberg and say, "Doug, any chance, is there going to be an article about this?"
I think we'll be doing a little bit, and it won't be a massive article.
Well, I wouldn't expect that, but even, even the website where we could go, our websites to learn about these... Very good. Thanks, though.
All the candidates have websites.
But I don't know who the candidates are. That's probably the biggest single issue.
But we do have a sample ballot, actually, in the lobby here, the Village Hall, that has the name of all the candidates, if, if a resident wanted to come in, and we can, uh, we also have that posted out on the website, a sample ballot.
And that'll be posted in the newspaper also, that sample ballot?
Yep, it has to be posted in the paper.
Very good. Thank you, Becky. All right. Moving right along, the, uh, item number five on the agenda is adoption of ordinance 01-2011, amending Chapter 6 alcohol beverages, et cetera. And, uh, Gloria, you want to talk to this? There's a lot, there's quite a bit underlined here about changes, and, uh, Gloria, you may be in the best position to talk about the, um, what, actually, the reason why we need to make this change?
I'll, I'll give you a, a brief, uh, brief, I'll make a brief comment and then defer it to the attorney, since he is the, the one that drafted it. Um, this, this art, or, uh, ordinance change came about because of, uh, some issues that we had when, um, a, um, establishment had gone out of business and the license was left idle and nothing was being done with it, and then, um, someone came in and we weren't, there wasn't anything that stated that, at that point, that they had to have legal rights to the building, and Terry, um, used this as an opportunity to clean it up, and I'm sure he can describe all of these changes much better than I can.
Sure. I, I would say there's three things that this will do, that we don't do now. Uh, if, if a liquor, if a business goes out of business and they're not operating anymore, uh, it will give us a reason for non-renewal of that license. Currently, they own the license, even if they're not using it, they could, in theory, keep it, and we wouldn't really have a good argument against getting, against, saying no to the renewal, so they could just hold the license out there, and we would, now we could at least consider that as a, as a reason to deny a renewal. So, we, we at least have the option that they would stay in business, and, oh, by the way, to preface all this, this came about because of the North Point, and the issue with the North Point, when they went out of business, and they were trying, they were trying, this would have helped them, because they were trying to work a deal with the purchasers, who, who were going to open up a new restaurant there, and they had a hard time getting the liquor license transferred over. Um, so, anyway, uh, the second thing is, they have to be in control of the premises. In other words, they have to have, either own the building or have a valid lease, that they can prove to us they have control of the premises, so they can't just hold a liquor license, tell us they have the premises, but they don't actually have the premises. So, that's the second thing this does. And the third thing is, if they owe us any money, if they owe us unpaid fines or, or whatever, if they owe us money, they have to pay that money first before we'll renew their license. So, those are the three changes to the ordinance. Most of them, I think, are favorable both to the license holders and to us.
Very good.
Any questions on that?
So, do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 01-2011?
I'll move to adopt ordinance number 01-2011, and ordinance amending the municipal code for the Village of North Hudson.
Thank you, Colleen. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Further discussion? We don't need to roll call. All in favor of adopting ordinance 01-2011, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Plan Commission is on the agenda, but...
There was no Plan Commission meeting, so there's no update.
Correct. Say it again, Gloria.
Plan Commission did not have a meeting in January, so there isn't any update at this time.
Personnel and Finance Committee met a little while ago, and, uh, we have a few things that we would like to recommend to you, not the least of which is paying our bills. And so, as you look, uh, at their, at your, in your package, you'll see two sets of recommendations. One is, the first one, and I would like this in two separate motions. The first one is to approve December 2010 non-recurring claims. You'll notice these are for the year 2010, and then the second packet is for the dream month, paying bills that have, uh, that we've incurred in 2011, so you'll understand what I mean by the dream packet, the dream bills, in just a moment. Do I have a motion for the December 2010? Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Um, I would ask Mark if he would please read the Board motion as written, because it contains the actual...
To approve the December 2010 non-recurring claims totaling $46,794.64, in parentheses, received in January 2011.
Okay. Any discussion or questions about these bills? Because this is a spending amount, we will take a roll call. Start with you, Mark.
Aye.
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 Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. I'd like a motion for the, um, next set of bills.
Move approval of the 2011 non-recurring claims received in December 2010 totaling $6,798.98.
I'll second that. Um, is, Gloria, just want to check, is this correct, received, the 2011, received in December? That's...
Not necessarily, no.
Okay.
No, she probably didn't change it from last...
Right. Is, would it be correct to say to approve the 2011 non-recurring claims totaling, in other words...
Yeah, leave out that, because I don't know. Some could be in December, some could be in January.
Okay. Uh, Darrell, would you agree to that, uh, change in the motion?
I'm just reading what's in front of me.
I know you are, and that's, I, I should have caught that before, but I didn't. Okay. The motion then would be to approve the 2011 non-recurring claims totaling $6,798.98. You okay with that, Jim?
I am, indeed.
Any questions? Roll call, vote, start this time with you, Mr. Wacken.
Yes.
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 All right. Item B, I would ask someone to, uh, make the motion in the form of, I guess I want to get Mr. Street the last part here, and then we can have a brief discussion about it. Says to do with the library impact fees. Someone makes him...
Did I make that motion in finance, or...
Um... Yes, Joe, you did.
Yes, you did, Joe.
2011, well, I might as well make it again.
Yeah, please do.
I moved, uh, that the Board adopt resolution number 2011-01, resolution to amend the schedule of fees, cash deposits, and charges, and it pertains to the library impact fees for the village.
Thank you, Joe. Second by?
Second.
Thank you, Stan. Uh, just a brief comment on what this is all about. We were collecting $248 from each, from a developer for each house that was constructed in the village. We accumulated $34,406.33, which, if you may recall, back in December, we transferred to the library after much rigmarole. Um, our attorneys were involved in that transfer, and I have quite a packet on, of information on that process. We had actually talked about, uh, eliminating the collection of this impact fee a couple times, and was on the agenda last month, but we postponed it until this month. I'm glad we did, because it gave me the opportunity to also read the December 13 meeting minutes from the Hudson Area Joint Library Board. In those minutes, I read the following paragraph. President's report by Roy Soberg. Soberg stated that the issues with the impact fees have been resolved. A resolution was received from the Village of North Hudson approving the entire impact request of approximately $34,000. Because, and this is the item that I under, I highlighted, wanted to make sure I shared it with you, because the city of Hudson used their portion of the fees to offset the purchase price of the building, no fees are remaining or being assessed. If we do not pass this resolution tonight, we would be the only one of the four municipalities that would be collecting an impact fee. And so, um, we could go on with more reasons, not the least of which would be the administrative, uh, nightmare of collecting, processing these fees, and then figuring out, how do we disperse them? And there are more, but I would ask the Board, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them at this time. Silence is definite.
I think that was a good review.
Thank you very much, Joe. Um, I would ask for a roll call vote on this, and I would start with, yeah, Mark.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Uh, the next item that you see on your agenda is, uh, the revising the North Hudson fee schedule, and I'll ask that, I'll simply state that we're going to postpone that until we have all our fees for the year 2011 updated, or fee schedule updated, rather. Item D is a non-issue. The Board approved the fire protection agreement during its January meeting. And so, that takes us to the item number E, and I don't have anything to report as we're awaiting, we're still in negotiation. Let me, if I, if it's all right, I will leave it at that. Okay? And we get to Public Works, and I know that Mr. Stanifer has a few things that he would like to share with us regarding Public Works.
Uh, just a couple things. Um, Public Works had some very preliminary discussion at our last meeting concerning the possibility of considering a parking ordinance for, um, snow removal. Data is still being obtained in some comparison of some other ordinances. I think it's a fair statement to indicate that, um, the members of that committee are not terribly enthusiastic about putting another ordinance on the books, but we're willing to consider the topic and have the discussion. Um, so, just putting you on notice that it's on our agenda again next month, and we'll talk about it. We were alerted by our village engineer that there is the possibility that the Wisconsin Street North project, um, may be eligible for some grant funds that's down the road as far as our capital improvement projects are concerned, but we'll, uh, watch that process, and at such appropriate time as those grant applications are, are due, we'll proceed with the consideration of that as well. Um, we did discuss the, uh, the sidewalk replacement project. Uh, it's not on our agenda for tonight to approve that project. It is budgeted, um, in our 2011 village budget, and from the standpoint of Public Works, we, uh, are going to recommend to the Board that we do proceed with, with that project, and again, I would stress that it is currently bu- budgeted. But the one item that we did discuss at some length, um, and it is on the agenda tonight, and that is Resolution 2011-03, and that is the, uh, the project for Station Lane North and Station Circle. The estimates of the village engineer on that project are approximately $148,000 to complete that project. It is the next road improvement project on our capital, um, plan, so it would be right in the rotation of the projects as they come up. So, Mr. President, if a motion would be in order, I would move to approve the Station Lane North and Station Circle North street resurfacing project, and to approve Resolution 2011-03 declaring the intent to levy special assessments for the Station Lane North and the Station Circle North street resurfacing project, and if that is seconded, then I'd like to speak to that.
Second.
The discussion that we had in Public Works is that we would like to proceed with the orderly process of obtaining, uh, bids and going through the process. We're a little bit ahead of the timeframe that we were last year for the 10th Street project, but we'd rather be ahead of the timeframe than behind the timeframe. We recognize that, um, should the bids not be, uh, appropriate, uh, or if there is some other reason that we would not proceed with the project, that could be done, but we need to follow our procedures with respect to, um, the obtaining bids, having a public hearing, indicating to the affected property owners the intent to levy special assessments if the project is in fact completed, and that's what the intention of this, uh, motion is tonight, and the approval of the project, to, uh, proceed on an orderly basis with obtaining the bids. And I don't know if Kevin wants to say anything, uh, about them. Uh, it's pretty straightforward. We've got the estimates, um, but at this point, we would be wanting to proceed with the, the process, holding out the option that if for some reason, um, the bids were not satisfactory, or for some other reason, that we could, uh, pull the plug at a later date.
If this does get passed tonight, um, schedule-wise, what we'd be looking at doing then is holding a public hearing, um, for the project, which would be at the, the March Village Board meeting. Um, kind of in between the resolution and that public hearing, we'll have to generate the preliminary assessment report, which basically summarizes the different parcels that'll be affected, and give the, uh, prospective property owners an idea of what the cost will actually be for that, for their parcels. And I did take a look, um, when we did the first phase, which was back in 2007, and at that time, those parcels were roughly about $2,000, $2,800 per, per piece, per parcel, so, I'm anticipating it's going to be fairly close to that, that clo- uh, clo- cost, um, once we go through the process. I guess the big unknown is, that project is a asphalt. Um, as you're aware, it's kind of driven by prices of gas. We haven't bid anything out to date yet, so I don't have a good feel for where those numbers sit, but, um, obviously, we'll be bringing those results to the Village Board for consideration. Once we do bid it out, we'll know what kind of costs we're up against, so...
Kevin, in the past, there's been discussion specifically about the residents in Station Circle regarding how this, the, uh, cost would be distributed, and I do recall that at one time, there was, it was based on footage, in some projects, it's based on footage, and in other projects, such as, such as Station Circle, it would be evenly divided, specifically because some of the properties are on corners.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, has that been discussed?
I guess it hasn't been discussed, but just precedence of what we've done in the past, that's what we're looking at doing, basically, basically taking the total dollar amount and dividing it evenly among the 22 parcels... Basically, taking the total dollar amount and dividing it evenly among the 22 parcels that'll be affected, kind of what we've done in the past.
And what is, if I can ask, what is the Pacer rating of the streets, or street comma, or streets that are affected?
They're one of, one of the lowest, no surprise, one of the lowest within the village, and they're currently rated at a three or a four. Ten being a street that's been reconstructed, just like the 10th Street.
Right.
Goes down to one. And three and four is actually the lowest within the village for currently.
And as I understand it right now, one of the problems is that our snowplows actually get caught in their ruts out there.
Yep. Yep. The pavement is deteriorating at such a rate that it's causing issues out there, yes.
And that deterioration rate seems to be exponential. Once it starts, it gets worse a lot faster.
Yep.
Could you tell us what the division up is? Is it a 50/50 with the village and property owners?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear because when you read this, it doesn't really mention.
50% village cost and 50% would be special assessments to the affected property owners.
Yep. Since it's over 20 years, that's the current assessment policy that the village has.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do any of the board members have any questions of either Kevin or Darrell? Or Stan? Or Mark? Have I got everybody from Public Works now?
Let's read them again.
All right. Darrell, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Shall we vote? I'd like to do a roll call on this one.
Yes.
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 Okay. There we go. Public Safety.
Joe? There was no, we did not meet, so there are no minutes that are published, and therefore I do not have a report.
That was a good report, right?
Thank you.
Public Welfare?
We did meet. We have no requests of the board. Next month, we'll have our final numbers for dear management in regards to voice messaging. We are putting that on hold until we can get some type of assurance that we can protect residents' information properly. There will be a change in the Animal Humane Society billing. I had a good conversation with the Humane Society, and because of the short notice that they gave us, they extended our current contract out for another three months. So we will be addressing that when we get the facts that we need to make a decision. And that pretty much summarizes everything we talked about.
Thank you very much. Colleen, this is probably about the earliest, I mean, 33 minutes into the meeting. This is about the earliest we've ever asked you to give a report about.
It is.
So.
Really? Okay.
And the longest she's stayed awake.
Surprising you noticed.
Well, we did meet last month, but we have nothing to bring forward yet either, just continuing to work on our projects and nothing new yet.
That's it. We've got your wish.
Mr. Zappa, you've been quite quiet during this whole meeting, and so I would ask you if there's anything that you would like to say at this time to the board.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye.
If anybody cares.
The records show that this meeting was adjourned at 7:34.